Twenty twenty five will all rise for the pledge of allegiance followed by a short invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Father God, right now, we just want to pause and say thank you for allowing us to come here to the village to do the business here in the village of Woodline. Lord, we ask that you purge our minds, our hearts, that we take away what is good for the village. Lord, we ask that you touch in each and every household here that is represented here in the village of Woodline. Lord, we ask that you shine a special blessing on our bereaved families here in the village of Woodline. Lord, we ask also a special blessing on our vice mayor's dad, who had surgery on yesterday, and we ask for speedy recovery, Lord, that he heals within. Father God, these blessings, and we ask in thy son Jesus' name for his sake, amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Poole?
Present.
Esther Boyd?
Present.
Rosemary Brown? Cindy Chandler?
Present.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Present.
Robert Lawson?
Present.
Michelle Starr?
Present.
All right. I need a motion to excuse Ms. Brown from tonight's meeting, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well. All right. Reading and disposal of our previous minutes, the regular council meeting from September the thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions that are in front of us tonight? If there are no changes to those minutes, I ask for a motion for approval.
I make a motion for approval of the regular council meeting minutes from September thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well. Special council meeting, October the fourteenth, twenty twenty five. I need a motion to approve the special council meeting minutes, again, from October the fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Any corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes in front of us?
I'll make a motion to approve the special council meeting that was held October fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes?
Aye.
All right. Committee and commission reports committee of the whole, October the fourteenth, twenty twenty five?
Yes. Um, yes. Um, we met on, uh, before I give an update on the committee of the, uh, committee of the whole, I noticed there was a correction on the report for committee of the whole. It says that we adjourned at six nineteen, but we actually adjourned at eight nineteen. So it's a tight one.
It says eight twenty eight on mine.
It says eight twenty eight on, for committee of the whole.
I see eight twenty eight.
Okay. I was looking at the, the first email copy.
This, this one?
The committee of the whole.
Look at the old one?
Is it in parentheses, started immediately after special meeting? Is that the one you got?
Yeah, but that one, so I, this, it looks like it could have been updated.
I didn't change anything.
Okay, so it was the electric company, never mind, let's, we'll, I'll go. Um, so, uh, prior to committee of the whole, we met for special council session, for a special session to consider discussing vote on resolution to support the Mill Creek Triangle Trail feasibility study and an ordinance authorizing transfer of the property um, from the, the village of Woodline to Community Improvement Corps. Um, we adjourned at six nineteen, then immediately went into, uh, committee of the whole at six twenty. Everyone was present, previous minutes were accepted, agenda approved, and the departments reported on their areas. Starting with, uh, Public Works. The Public Works Director shared the, on continuous beautification of the, of the village, um, on its infrastructure with reminders to keep, uh, bush bundles at four feet. Uh, um, also, um, with their staff, uh, we showed them appreciation um, for participating in our village of Woodline's wedding expo. And, uh, recall the, uh, council also complimented their efforts. Uh, the police chief shared, uh, uh, information about Cincinnati's, uh, shootings increasing, but commending his personnel with, um, as having intentional preparations in keeping our village safe. Also, um, he informed his department saw two assault cases, um, and that they are partnering with Greater Cincinnati Homeless Coalition um, by helping with calls. And it was noted that Cincinnati Public Schools are aiding students who are experiencing homelessness. Uh, he also shared his department is losing a great officer, George Shannon, due to some financial needs and which is resulting in a hiring need for, um, his crew. Parks and Recreation Manager, um, who recently got married, uh, congratulations to him again. Um, he shared success on their past events such as the Spanish Heritage Festival and the Wedding Expo, along with weekly activities such as the line dance and basketball preseason training, and some future events, um, which was the recent, um, trunk retreat and an upcoming Veteran Day event on November sixth from one to two, celebrating our own local heroes. Um, Officer Rowan, um, with the Police Department and Ryan with the Fire Department. Uh, Princeton City's High School cadets will perform at that event, so please come out and enjoy. The Fire Chief and their staff, uh, shared, uh, information about Woodline Transport Services, where they're netting an income of approximately ninety-six thousand dollars this year. And they're partnering with more transport management companies to get more quality and quantity work to help build revenue for the village, along with opportunities to provide, uh, to provide, uh, rides to students with medical needs such as crisis intervention. Um, the Cincinnati Inquirer, we were informed the Cincinnati Inquirer offered to write an article on them. And the village manager, uh, who will go into detail later, briefly shared information about Hamilton County's revitalization, revitalization grant, um, some road improvements, um, Neighborhood Allies is returning to help, uh, with our residents on November the fourteenth. Um, if anyone wants detail, please call five one three eight two three three four four eight. And in new business, we discussed, um, community events such as, um, the village purchasing property at one zero zero eight eight Springfield Pike and transferring that over to C I C. We discussed the new village logo, which includes a beautiful musical note on the trunk of the tree. This will be made public soon, I guess, I don't know how soon, but soon. Um, we discussed opportunities to clean up, uh, the Mill Creek and, uh, shared, um, learnings about, um, opportunities for, uh, residents to come listen to, um, presentations about managing their energy bill. And the meeting was adjourned at eight nineteen P M.
All right, thank you, Michelle. Any questions for Ms. Starr, the committee of the whole? All right. Uh, having none, uh, Finance Committee, October the twentieth, twenty twenty five, Ms. Chandler?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, as you stated, Finance Committee meeting met on October twentieth, twenty twenty five. The meeting was called to order at seven oh three. Members present were myself, Michelle Starr, as well as Pamela Fitzgerald. Also present were Lauren Chris, Finance Director, Tim Engel, Village Manager, Ashley Maiden, our Assistant Finance Director, Charles Willis, Income Tax Commissioner, Esther Boyd, Council Member Rosemary Brown, and Robert Lawson, Council Member. I will not go into great detail because Mr., uh, Chris will come up and give his finance report, but just to hit on a couple of items, income tax update was provided to us by Mr. Charles Willis, and he reported the following. The village collected seven hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars in taxes related to the month of September. Of that amount, fifty-three hundred was deposited into the village treasury in September, and the remainder of seventy, seven hundred forty-one thousand, twenty-eight dollars was deposited in October. Distribution of village taxes are documented as below. General Fund received five hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven. Road and sidewalk tax, ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars. The debt, thirty-five thousand, forty-five dollars. Capital projects received nineteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, which rolled up again to seven hundred forty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The village continues to contract with Rita for, um, taxes, and Rita informed the village on October the fifteenth, twenty twenty five, that they mailed out one thousand eight hundred sixty-one non-filer letters for taxpayers that neglected to file a municipal tax return. So that should be coming in soon, or people should be responding, um, as needed. And again, I will save the rest, I won't steal Mr. Chris, uh, thunder, and he will report on the rest under the Finance Committee report.
I got a comment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chandler.
I got a comment. I think that's, um, gonna be held off until January.
That is correct, so the, the
What are we talking about?
Uh, non-filing letters are gonna be held off until January.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Per review, we noted some, some errors, and that's when we make sure that people that got them actually deserve to get them.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Thank you, I'm noting that.
All right. Very well. Any other questions for Ms. Chandler and Finance? Having none, Municipal Managers Report?
Thank you, Mayor. What going on still in the village? Um, Lee Crest Road improvements, and we've kind of been discussing those, we've had money for, to do Lee Crest Road um, improvements for some time now. Uh, we kind of pumped the brakes a little bit because Springfield Township is building a subdivision right on the corner of Lee Crest and Grove. Um, and our real concern, among other things, uh, are the utility cuts that will be done to add water and sewer and such to the, uh, to the new subdivision. Um, I'm actually working on, actually, we'll be having a meeting with the township next week to discuss the project and some possible alternatives, to see if we can't get this thing, uh, up and going here before, uh, before the end of next year. Um, as noted, uh, in Ms. Chandler's report, Hamilton County, we received a revitalization grant from Hamilton County in twenty twenty four. Uh, this was for the purpose of constructing a new parking lot and food truck, that will accommodate food trucks, um, onto Conic. Um, that project was bid out in September with John R. Jurgensen Company as the lowest and best bidder. Um, we're working on setting a date for a pre-construction meeting. Uh, we're currently, I think we have most of the folks ready to go. Uh, G C W W is, um, a little busy right now, so we're trying to get a good time with them to come to the table to make sure everybody's where they need to be. Uh, the Hamilton County Economic Impact Grant from twenty twenty five. Uh, as you will recall, we are purchasing another house on Springfield Pike. Um, that grant was valued at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, we had asked the Cincinnati Port Authority if there were any demolition monies left, uh, to demolish that, that home. Uh, we provided some information to the port that they requested to us, we're waiting a response. Um, the communications I've gotten from them seem very positive, but, uh, we're kind of waiting to, to see what's, what's left for us, so, uh, fingers crossed. Um, Hamilton County Facade Improvement Grant Program, again, as you'll recall, uh, Hamilton County provided the village with fifty thousand dollars in grant money, uh, to improve, uh, facades of some of the local businesses here in the village. The village of Woodline added another fifteen thousand dollars to that amount. Two of those businesses have successfully completed their projects and received their reimbursement. Uh, we're awaiting the other three, uh, to complete theirs. Uh, I know two of them are very, very close. Um, the other one, I think, uh, had a couple of hiccups, but they're well on their way. Uh, Springfield Pike and Gruniger Improvements, I think the entire village at this point has noticed the sidewalks that have been added to Gruniger Way and Springfield Pike. Uh, for the most part, that project is complete, we are awaiting certain, um, accommodations, we'll say. We've got a couple of new bus shelters that'll go in, as well as a new crosswalk. That project is supposed to be complete by the end of November. Again, that was paid for, uh, in part by Hamilton County, Sorda, so, uh, very happy to, to partner with those guys and, uh, just still a lot of great work here in the village. Uh, our Wayne Avenue Improvements, uh, again, we received, uh, O P W C funding, so Ohio Public Works Commission, uh, funding for that project, which was a fifty-fifty split between grant, funding, and interest-free loans. Um, that project was bid out again in September, uh, with Rack and Baller Excavation Company as the lowest and best bidder. Uh, again, working on setting the pre-construction meeting and getting G C W W to the table. Um, our Glendale-Milford Sidewalk Improvements, um, all the, um, schematics and, and documents for that have been drawn. Um, that is a project funded by Sorda, uh, that will add new sidewalks to Glendale-Milford Road, uh, from Chester to Wayne Avenue. Um, the, um, uh, project will be bid out before the end of this year. Uh, on top of that, uh, we were just awarded last month, uh, a grant to repave half of Glendale-Milford Road from Springfield Pike to Wayne Avenue. Um, that project, that, that repaving project will be bid out next year, uh, but both of those projects should be completed next year, so we'll have new sidewalks and half of the road repaved by the end of next year. Marion Road, uh, as we come into twenty twenty six, we'll see several upgrades. Um, O P W C, uh, again, provided the village with, uh, a partial grant and partial loan to make improvements to Marion Road, that includes some of the drainage. Uh, that was, um, accented by another three hundred thousand dollars in funding from the Municipal Road Fund. There's a contract for that funding on the agenda, uh, for legislation tonight. And then, uh, on top of that, with those road improvements, uh, the village received a Transportation Alternatives Grant through the Ohio Kentucky and Indiana Regional Council of Governments to, uh, to, um, add and complete sidewalks on Marion Road. So that'll, that'll put sidewalks all the way on Marion Road from Springfield Pike, uh, all the way up to, uh, uh, Chester Road, uh, and towards the, uh, the Timberland subdivision, so
Good.
that'll connect, uh, one of the highest density population areas on that side of the village to Springfield Pike and the amenities, so very proud of that. That should take place in twenty twenty six as well.
Ooh, that's great.
Uh, Regional Safety Complex is, uh, still on schedule as far as we, as far as we know, and that is set to open up in the spring of twenty twenty six, so I think we're all waiting with bated breath to silence. Um, as, uh, Councilperson Chandler noted, Neighborhood Allies will be back in the village on November the fourteenth. Uh, if you, uh, know somebody that needs help, please do send them down to the Village Recreation Center on November the fourteenth, or you can call Neighborhood Allies at five one three eight two three three four four eight. Uh, as noted, we did purchase the property at one zero zero eight eight Springfield Pike, which is the old strip mall property. Um, that property is being evaluated, uh, by our engineering firm, Verdantis, to really kind of see what we have there. The property, uh, several years ago, uh, was like a speed, was like a Jiffy Lube, uh, oil change station. And we're looking at the structure and what's left to determine whether the property could be renovated and remodeled to be a new fire station. So just trying to use the, the assets we acquire in the best way here at the village. Uh, the Fire Department, as we noted last month, also received a FEMA grant for the purpose of purchasing defibrillators, uh, as well as paramedic training in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And then, uh, in terms of just other, uh, buildings and other issues, uh, we continue to look at some opportunities for Town Square, uh, and we continue to look at our building evaluation, where we assess not only the Fire Department, as we mentioned previously, but also the Police Department, Admin Department, and Public Works Facility. So we continue to look, look, move forward on some plans for some new capital buildings, uh, that will hopefully be able to present more sooner than later. Um, I also want to point out that the, uh, Recreation Department, um, had a really positive trunk retreat here last Saturday. Um, uh, Director Sherman was hoping that we would have twenty cars, she got twenty-seven. So thank you to the community and businesses that came out to support the kids. Uh, Public Works also provided hayrides to the children. Um, everybody seemed to have a really good time, we only had positive results, or reports. So again, that was a great event by Paula and the team. Uh, we are celebrating Veterans Day on November the sixth at the Recreation Center. Uh, we are planning a pep rally for Woodline's, we own Kelsey Mitchell, on November the fifteenth, from three to five. And then, we'd also like everybody to remember that Flik is the first Friday of December. So we have some great events coming up here in the village as well. And unless there are any questions, Mayor, that is all I have to report right now.
I don't have any questions, um, well, I, I, it could be. Um, you, you mentioned about the sidewalks on the eastern side of Woodline. Um, and I know that you, a Council Member Chandler, uh, the principal at Woodline, had talked about, I don't know if it was safe routes to school.
Yes.
But have we, what's an update on that? Because again, um, I am very passionate about sidewalks being on Riddle Road.
Yep, absolutely.
That has been something that's probably over a sixty-year, um, cry from the community, and so we talk about sidewalks, I, I want to
Yep.
talk about those sidewalks over there.
We're attacking two different opportunities for sidewalks on Riddle Road, safe routes to school, as you mentioned. Uh, we've been working with Paige Russell from Hamilton County to work through that program this year. We should have something to present to Council for November meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then we've also applied for sidewalk funding through Sorda, uh, through, for Riddle Road as well, so uh, if we don't catch them with the right, we'll get them with the left, but we'll get those sidewalks.
All right. Sounds good.
That's a good move.
I like that, all right. Any other questions for, uh, Mr. Engel and his report tonight? All right. Uh, Clerk, is there any communications, petitions claimed to the public? All right. Finance degree, uh, Finance Directors Report, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, we can reference the, uh, second page of the October twentieth, uh, Finance Committee Meeting. Uh, start, start in the Reports Provided section. Uh, as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, we were seventy-five percent through the fiscal year. Um, General Fund had collected seventy-nine percent of the estimated revenue, uh, and expended fifty-five percent of, of the budgeted, uh, expenditure, expenditures. Um, the reason for the, uh, kind of the offset there is that we had, we issued a bond in, uh, September, collected the proceeds of the bond for the purchase of the Springfield property, um, Springfield Pike property, but it did not, uh, we didn't spend, the property wasn't purchased until October first, so, uh, the budgeted expenditure, expenditures are, are less. Uh, for all funds, we had received sixty-two percent of the budgeted, uh, revenue and expended forty-two percent. For receipts and dispersments, uh, the village collected, uh, during the month of September, uh, receipts were three million, five hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred seventy dollars, dispersed, uh, one million, two fifty-five, eight eighty-one. Uh, again, the dispersments were lower, quite a bit lower than receipts because of that bond, the bond proceeds we got in September. All right. Uh, Fund Balance Report, uh, was included in the, in the Financial Committee Packet. General Fund Balance, at the end of September, was five point five million. Uh, the balance for all funds was ten point two million. Uh, village spent, uh, twenty-eight thousand, just a little over twenty-eight thousand in overtime for the month of September. And as of, uh, the end of September, uh, Police Department, Fire Department, and Public Works accounted for fifty percent, thirty-seven percent, and nine percent of the overtime charges respectively. For the salary, uh, the salary, um, expenditures for the village were, to date, uh, were, uh, four million, five hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven ninety-six. And, uh, that, that percentage increase has been holding steady over twenty twenty-four at twelve percent. Uh, for Recreation Department, uh, revenues were under, uh, expenditures, General Fund, by two hundred sixty-one thousand. They were over, revenues over expenditures in the We Thrive Grant, uh, one thousand, six twenty-eight, and revenues under expenditures for the Pool Levy Fund by six thousand, two forty-five. Uh, included in this, uh, packet tonight is, uh, receipts and dispersment reports for your approval, receipts of dispersment listing, and the bank reconciliation as of September, uh, thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Mr.? Any questions for Lonnie and his report for Finance? All right, thank you, Mr. Chris, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Law Directors Report?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there's only two items for legislation tonight. Um, first is a resolution authorizing, um, continuing healthcare coverage for village employees. Um, it's the same healthcare, uh, provider. Um, and the splits with the employees are the same as last year. And the other one is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the village and the Board of County Commissioners relative to improvements on Marion Avenue. And this is to authorize, uh, three hundred thousand dollars in funds, uh, towards improvements on Marion.
Should, should that read Marion Road? We don't have a Marion Avenue here in the village.
It was drafted by the, um, county, but we can, we can change it.
Okay. I, I, I mean, I'm, that's a question, so I'm gonna take your advice, meaning that if it's drafted by the county, is it still recognized as a road? Although this is a legislation saying Avenue?
I think it's fine, I think it's just a scripter's error.
Very well, okay.
And I don't have anything else, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. I got a question. Can you give us more information on that? Because you just said three hundred thousand in funds.
Yes.
Is that us?
That, that is from the county, that's coming from the county.
Coming from the county.
Uh-huh. Municipal Road Fund is run through Hamilton County.
Yes.
And it adds to the total amount that's being pushed towards Marion Road for improvements.
Okay, I just didn't see any dollar amounts in what you said.
Yes, three hundred thousand. It's, it's in the actual agreement.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Can we back up? Thank you, thank you, Clerk, appreciate that. Um, Ms. Chandler, we do need to approve the receipt listing, payment listing, and the back, bank reconciliation for that month.
Okay. I would like to, um, make a motion to approve the receipt listing, payment listing, and bank reconciliation for the month of September, twenty twenty five.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well, okay. I have a couple of things I just want to, um, just touch on tonight. Um, as I always, uh, mention in my report, um, our Police Department is out there in the morning, folk. Um, and I, I, I just urge that, we're, we're, we're talking about it so much, I just feel that we are giving heads up to our residents out there. Not everyone that is being stopped is a resident here in the village of Woodline. However, um, we, we residents here in the village of Woodline should be a little bit more cognitive of the kids out there, um, most of which have some type of a relationship with us. And so we again want to be mindful of the speed coming, um, through these school zones, both the Woodline Elementary and, um, Idea. I see both of those, of the officers at both of those locations, so we need to be mindful of that. Um, I did want to mention tonight, um, as all of us are aware, uh, the government shutdown, um, and here we are. We are in the final week of SNAP benefits. As of Friday, uh, SNAP benefits will be cut off to millions of Americans. Um, how many here in this local area, I'm not for sure, but it's a big number that is going to be impacted. So what I'm asking from the community is that we have a relationship that we have built over the year, um, over the years with Valley Interfaith and Lachlan. They have been very supportive, uh, to some of our residents for some of their immediate needs. Um, so I'm asking that, um, if, if your heart purges you to do so, that we consider donating, uh, to Valley Interfaith. Um, again, as they are, um, serving some of our residents right here in the village of Woodline. They are always welcome for any type of monetary, as well as food donation. So again, I ask anybody that, uh, feels free to do that, they are located in Lachlan, right, right there in front of the post office in the Lachlan Branch. Um, the only thing, um, the memorial service, again, I mentioned in last month's meeting, uh, for Mr. Lucius Ware, uh, who was a former, uh, village manager here in the village of Woodline. Um, in addition to his many, many years in the education, um, including Princeton, his memorial is going to be on His memorial is going to be on Saturday at 2:00 PM at the Hall and Jordan Funeral Home in Forest Park. I, I, I have, I got word on yesterday that I have to leave town on Friday, and so I'm gonna be speaking with the Vice Mayor tonight. Hopefully she can help me out by delivering something to that family on Saturday. And then lastly, as we approach our holiday calendar, and I did not have this conversation with my Clerk, so I hope she don't come over here and hit me in the head. But Clerk, I'm, I'm asking, looking at our calendar, December the 16th, Lonnie, would that be okay? Being that we typically will have Finance on the 15th, the following week would have been, the following week would have been?
Yeah, I think we could both.
All right. So if everybody is in agreement, I do
I'm just playing. No, no.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm rolling with you, Mayor. I'm rolling with you.
But I do need a motion to change the December meeting to December the 16th, which will be for council meeting. Instead of December the 20th?
The 30th.
30th, we'll move that to December the 16th. I need a motion to change that.
I'll make a motion to, to move the December council meeting to December 16th, 2025.
Correct.
So, and I'll second that motion.
Okay. You had a question?
In essence, then we're pushing everything up?
No, Cal will all, the Cal will be on the 9th as scheduled, that's, which is the second Tuesday.
Finance will be when?
Finance will be on Monday the 15th.
Monday, then Tuesday. Okay, we'll just keep moving.
Instead of the 22nd.
Got it.
Okay?
Got it.
So yes, in that, in that sense, yes, you're moving up a week. Okay? All right. There's been a motion, and it's properly seconded. All ayes?
Aye.
Very well. All right. All right. Vice Mayor, I do need an approval of my monthly Mayor's Court statement.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the Mayor's Court Monthly Statement for $54,419.38. I'll second the motion.
The motion been moved and properly seconded. All ayes?
Aye.
All right.
What's the date of the November?
November or December?
November.
November should be?
25th.
Thank you, Monica.
So that's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving?
Oh, we
Yes. Okay, got you.
Yes, yes. Okay. All right. Ms. Boyd?
Thank you.
You good? Okay. All right. We can go into the legislation?
First item is Resolution 32, 2025, a resolution authorizing the municipal manager to enter into a contract for healthcare coverage for eligible employees through Sidecar Health in setting the percentage split of the cost between the village and employees for such coverage.
I need a motion for passage of Resolution Number 32, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion for passage of Resolution Number 32, 2025.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly seconded. Roll call on the passage, please.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Starr?
Aye. The next item is Resolution 33, 2025, a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Village of Woodlawn and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners relative to the improvement of Marion Road.
All right. I need a motion for passage of Resolution Number 33-2025.
I'll make the motion for passage for Resolution Number 33, 2025.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly seconded. Roll call on the passage, please.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Starr?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Is there any new business that comes before this council?
Can I, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
New business? I just want to echo how serious this is with this SNAP and WIC shutdown, how it's affecting so many residents. I've learned that it's gonna impact $19 million worth of food and clothing assistance. And with so many adults and so many children, and with Woodlawn, according to Hamilton County Public Health records, they report Woodlawn having approximately 20% of children in poverty. So if we can, like Brian said, who, you know, we have surplus, to consider giving to our local churches and to the pantry. It's just because starting Saturday and going throughout the month of November, it's gonna impact a lot of people in a negative way.
And I see Charlotte out there. I'm not for sure the organization, what is the name of it? Because you guys are all Say it again.
Lincoln Heights Valley Boosters.
And so I know that they are out
We're working on doing The pantry goes from April to October.
Okay.
We're done, but we're working on trying to do an emergency pantry
I got you. Okay.
for November and December.
Okay.
So you guys, we also take monetary donations because a lot of the food that we have, we have to buy it.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. So there's so many outlets, and I wanted to mention that because I know that they are boots on the ground during those months at these churches. Yes.
And I also have a list that I'm gonna send to the clerk of pantries throughout the city.
Okay.
Things that we can probably put on the website for Woodlawn. It was sent to me late last night.
Okay. Sounds good.
Just have a quick question, and thank you for the conversation. Will this affect free and reduced lunches for the students?
It could. That is a federal program, so yes, it is. I'm not gonna say it could. I'm gonna say yes, because that is a federal-funded program just like SNAP benefits. And so as we see as we see, as, as Ms. Chandler said, the picture has gotten huge. It has really gotten huge. And so you know, I, I shout out that hopefully both sides of the aisle can come together and come up with a solution and put all of those negative things behind us, because when we really, when it hit the road, we're talking about kids being impacted. And that's nothing that any of us want to see, if any kid goes to, goes to bed hungry. And we witness that on a daily basis in the schools that we're in with kids going home hungry. And so I'm one of those, I'm probably gonna tell on myself, but it's okay because I feel good when I do it. But I'm one of those staff members who is always behind the steam, the scene, packing lunches to go home with. My wonderful mentor to the left, to the right of me, told me sometimes you just gotta step out the box and do that, and that's what I do. So I know I'm probably not supposed to, but sometimes a lot of the things that I am sending home to these students either came out of my own pocket or the support of other staff within the building. But I am not. If I am aware of a kid that is hungry, he or she will not go home without food in their bookbag. I make sure of that. So again, that's a plea. We, we see it, we hearing it. It's a big, big picture out there. But again, thank you, Ms. Panda, for sharing that. But I know that that organization that you work with has been all over for the last so many months. But again, this, this is something totally different. So again, I know that I really partner at, at Valley Interfaith. They serve our community. They continue to reach out to both myself and Tim on a, on an always basis about what they are willing to do for our community. So with that arm extension, I like to see if our, our village can reach the arm as well and extend our gratitude for them as well. So thank you for everybody who have put that in about SNAP. It's just an unfortunate thing, and I can go on for days and days, but I don't want to do that. All right? I do need a motion, I need, I need to go into an executive session. So I need to, a motion to go into an executive session pursuant to Section 220, 220.01, Section G3 of the Woodlawn Code of Ordinance to discuss pending or imminent court action and legal matters requiring the attention of counsel with the Law, Law Director.
I'd like to make a motion to go into an executive session.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Clerk, I need a roll call for executive session, please.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Pamela Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Michelle Starr?
Aye.
Very well. I no action will be taken. So with that being said, to give our camera guy the opportunity to break down, counsel, can we breathe, can we just step over into the conference room? Chief, I do need you to join with that as well. Okay?